Hi, everybody.
Good evening, Councilwoman Byers.
Good evening, Commissioner Ganim.
How are you today?
I am good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Andre, it's good to see you on.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me.
Hi.
Thank you so much.
Order. Babe, excuse me one second, guys.
Are you talking to us, babe?
The age of remote.
It's always my dog that I most. It's that inopportune moment. You can go, you know, 20 or 30 minutes with the roundtable people talking and it's right when you want to talk that someone knocks on a door and the dog is barking and.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, good evening, Ladon.
Hello, Amanda.
Evening, Commissioner.
Good evening, Andre. How are you today?
Well, thank you so much.
Good.
Dr. Barg, I understand you like to ski.
Yeah, when there's snow, it's great.
Well, we've got. That is helpful, I find.
Yeah, I do. I do have a pair of rock skis.
Well, I'm just happy when the snow stays in the mountains where it belongs.
Oh, yeah. Although I've been pretty impressed with how much snow just in the last probably three or four days has melted.
Melted. Great 50-degree weather.
Yeah. In my hometown of the Dows, Oregon, I think it hit over 70 today.
Wow. I'm from the Dows. My husband is from Hood River.
Yep, beautiful sunny the Dows.
Yep.
Well, it's in the 60s in Sunnyside today.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, I heard it was going to be 60 here today, so. Um, I have about one minute to go here. Are we all set up to go when I'm ready?
As you wish.
Thank you.
One of my favorite movies, Andre. I always think of it every time you say that.
Oh, as you wish. Princess Bride.
Yes. All right, it is 5:30. So I am going to call the Board of Health Special Meeting of February 10th, 2022 to order. And this is Vice Chair Patricia Byers in for Commissioner Ron Anderson, who's not here this evening, who's the usual chair. So, Mr. Ibach, can we have a roll call and introduction of guests and staff?
Yes. Dr. Clary. Commissioner McKinney.
Present.
Commissioner Lindy.
Here.
Dr. Atterberry. Okay. Councilmember Duval, let us know that she'll be a little late. You'll be closer to 6 o'clock before she'll be able to join. Commissioner Anderson won't be attending the meeting. So, Dr. Clary, are you?
He just joined.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay. And Dr. Atterberry.
I think he let us. I think he let us know for these Thursday evenings that he'd also be a little bit late, if I recall.
Yeah, I think he's on call. So, all right. Thank you, Mr. Ibach.
And now may we. We'll go on to Yakima Health District staff, Andre Prescott.
Here, good evening.
Myself, Ryan Ibach, Chase Porter.
Here.
Lillian Bravo.
Here.
Sean McGee.
Here.
Dr. Barg.
Here.
Victoria Reyes.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
James Elliott.
Good evening.
Nathan Johnson.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now may we have a review of the submitted public written comments, please?
Okay, we do have one written submitted comment, and it's from Gene Mendoza. Here are two suggested topics for Yakima Health District Board of Directors discussions. Number one, gather data on people who have recovered from COVID-19. Learn how many have major disabilities. How many require rehabilitation services? How many have lung damage, etc. Ask whether resources to help with recovery are adequate. Number two, evaluate the impact of poor air quality on the health of people who live in Yakima County. I've attached copies of ecology's air quality measurements in the city of Yakima and the city of Sunnyside for the month of January 2022. I have attached a copy of research that shows a significant relationship between COVID-19 morbidity and mortality and poor air quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ibach. And we will move into Agenda Item 4, which is unfinished business. And the first item is the COVID-19 update. And Mr. Fresco, I believe you're doing that this evening?
Yes. Thank you so much, Councilmember Byers. Good evening to our guests and certainly to our board. Thank you, Councilmember, for chairing the meeting. And we do have a lot on our agenda. I do want to begin with, again, an update on COVID. We are starting to see a reduction in the numbers. As we've said many times, we lag often behind the rest of the state in terms of moving towards the goals that we want, that are often statewide goals and sometimes national goals. But we are seeing our numbers in terms of positive cases, especially Omicron decreasing. I will share that we have had some concerning news lately, which is increased a loss of life, increased deaths, which is always a tragedy for us in our community. And we've seen increases in those who are intubated. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't guess on why that's happening. I think that's something that needs to be looked into, and I'll defer to Dr. Barg. But I do have concerns about that because normally, if you saw a receding of an illness or even a dramatic reduction in the numbers of positivity case, you'd also see a reflection in less people intubated, certainly less people losing their life. less people intubated, certainly less people losing their life. So that's concerning to us, and it is a reflection that while we anticipate and look forward to a reduction in numbers, the reality is this is still a dangerous illness and we are still vulnerable in our community. Happy to entertain questions on that. And then I did have a few more things I wanted to discuss, if you don't mind, Councilmember Byers.
No, go ahead. Is there anyone on the board who wishes to pose a question for Mr. Fresco?
Do we have the data on the ages of those people who have needed to be intubated and whether or not they were vaccinated or unvaccinated?
I'll have to defer to Ryan and Melissa on that. I'm not certain we have that.
No, the numbers just come to us for the number of COVID patients who are intubated. They don't put specifics on details of identifying the patient.
Okay, so that would be my only request, is if possible, as you say, Andre, if we're run to try to understand it, certainly whether or not they're vaccinated or unvaccinated and their age groups and any comorbidities that they walked in with would be important to know.
We can certainly do research. Thank you, Commissioner. I wanted to also share, and this is something that I know that as a reflection point, it's always counterintuitive, but even in a circumstance where our numbers are reducing as a public service agency and a responsive agency, we're always in a process of continual vigilance around this illness, others as well, but specifically during this disaster response. We are planning in the likelihood of decreasing numbers. But we also have to plan for adversity if we do have a spike or we do have a different variant. So we spend our time talking about three weeks out, six weeks out, six months out, what we need to do to plan to ensure that we can protect our community. And so we've been having those discussions, and I wanted to share with you that as we look forward to hopefully a recovery phase, there will come a time when we're discussing Omicron, Delta, COVID in general, in a different light, we're nonetheless having to plan for what that transition looks like. I know that there are many people who are excited about this being over. I do want to share that we, as many in the public service community around the country and also in certainly hospitals and clinics, have staff who've been working very hard for years now. We certainly have to continue to support our staff, ensure their safety as they transition. But we will, I would imagine, have an expanded portfolio of work to do. And as we've said, there have been many results of COVID that have been painful for our community, and I think that we will see trauma as a result of that, and we want to be prepared. I share that because we have been fortunate to be working for a number of years on something called foundational public health services, or what is discussed routinely as FPHS. It's a program where the public health system, the, the public health system, local jurisdictions, the State Board of Health, the Department of Health, and tribes have been working collectively to receive funds from the legislature, and we have received funds in the past. But I wanted to share that that is an opportunity for us to do planning for what the transition would look like when that happens. And I'm grateful that we started that process many years ago to have those funds available, because I do anticipate that at some point the COVID funds will diminish. And sometimes in these circumstances, they diminish rapidly. So we want to be well positioned, and we are thinking about infrastructure, we're looking at programs, what are the new portfolio responsibilities that we may have post-COVID. We're certainly talking staffing and retention because people are tired and there are opportunities in other disciplines that could potentially attract interest from our staff. So I just wanted to begin the process of explaining that if we're fortunate to have a reduction over the next few months of numbers, we will nonetheless be planning for what the future looks like. And we have been directed by the board and asked by specific board members to talk about what the future looks like. Not just COVID, but what we do as an agency to support our community, the grand scheme of things. And so this is part of the plan. So I'll share more specifics with you later, but I did want to introduce that we're doing planning now.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. Any comments or questions by the board? All right, then we will move on to Item B, which is the House Bill eleven fifty-two. And, Mr. Elliott, I believe that you're going to present on this.
Yes, I am. Good evening. So if you'll remember, the last meeting that we had, which was, I think, January twenty-sixth, this board had asked me to communicate with the prosecutor's office. I did that two days later. On Friday, January twenty-eighth, I had a phone conversation with Don Anderson and Joe Brusick. And basically, I'd let them know in advance that this board had asked me to communicate with them to find out where we had agreements or disagreements. And it indicated that the intention was to come back to this board with the results of that conversation. In that conversation, Mr. Brusick basically said a couple of things that were our only area of disagreement. And that was, they essentially started off the conversation by saying that these discussions and sort of the planning on this is premature. That was the word that they used. Their instruction, they said, their legal advice was to wait until the Washington Administrative Code was in final form. If you'll remember, the Washington State Board of Health has been tasked with the responsibility of drafting what is WAC two forty-six dash ninety. It is the rulemaking authority that they have been given pursuant to statute to identify the selection process and their recruitment process. So the instruction that the prosecutor's office was suggesting was that any action taken prior to those rules being finalized was premature. The recommendation they were giving was to wait until those whacks were finalized, until there is complete and further information and knowledge presented through those whacks before any action should take place. Now, I will say, and I did to them, that I was in disagreement with that. The main reason that I am in disagreement with that, and I spent about twenty minutes sort of helping get them educated and up to speed on where the rulemaking process is, is that because the short timeframe has been set for the State Board of Health to draft these rules, their own timelines, and that is the Washington State Board of Health own timelines, have indicated that these rules probably won't be finalized till at a minimum May of this year. It's possible, based on their outlined timeline, that it could even be later than that. And so my disagreement with the prosecutor's office was waiting for those whacks to come into final effect before anybody takes any steps. We will be, it will be impossible to come up with a new board effective on July first. So that was our major area of disagreement. I then spent some time with them, trying to get them up to speed on where the Washington State Board of Health is in their rulemaking process. I sent them some links related to where the rules are in terms of draft form. I talked to them about the tentative rulemaking timeline that was on the Washington State Board of Health. I sent that to them. And after looking at it, they actually then were in agreement with me, that it, their initial advice of waiting and seeing what the final rules were would actually be a bad idea. So at the end of the conversation, they actually ended up agreeing with me on that. So the good news is, I'm hopeful they have now had a chance to go back and chat with the commissioners, which is what they told me they were going to do, to explain that the idea of waiting until the rules came into effect really would be problematic. In that conversation, I also took the opportunity to try and figure out if there are other areas where there was either agreement or disagreement. And in fairness to both Joe and Don Anderson, they said that they really hadn't, as of that day, January twenty-eighth, studied these rules in order to see what's required. They hadn't done any research related to what the statute said or what the requirements were. And it represented that they were waiting to get some information back from WASAC related to what their recommendations were. At the end of this conversation, I tried to at least guide them on what I think the areas are where there may be questions or things to work through. I pointed them to what the statute says in terms of these areas and the issues potentially that are there. And I informed them that my instructions by this board were to come back to you on this night, February tenth, to get back to them. And so I informed the prosecutor's office that if, in the next two weeks after our discussion, they had any areas of concern, disagreement, agreement, information they want to talk through, to get back to me. I have heard nothing in response, so I believe I've done everything that the board had requested me to do at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. I appreciate that. Does the board have any questions or comments from Mr. Elliott at this point?
Well, I guess I might just submit that, that our conversation from our end corroborates Mr. Elliott's side of the story. And so I'll just, I'll say that we have had that conversation with our council.
I would also just say thank you, James. And I do just want to caution that it's come up before in conversations, and we try to delicately proceed. As we are speaking tonight, we are speaking as health board members. And so it is not appropriate for us to have any discussions about any discussion that we have related to what we're going to do in our commissioners' role. So I just want to make sure that's, that's clear. And so any discussion about ordinances or what would need to happen will not be something that we'll be able to discuss. We can discuss it in our role as a health board member, but it must stay in that. And I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear. We're doing a good job of threading a needle.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinney. And thank you also, Commissioner Lindy. If there's no further questions or comments, we will go on to Item C, which is.
I would say, do we, do we want to? I guess, I know that it's the next step is, do you have anything else, Mr. Elliott, or do we want to just move into Dr. Cleary's topic since?
Well, I think the first thing, Commissioner, at our last meeting, I had presented the opportunity for this board because two, two meetings ago, I presented a whole bunch of information, statutes, the rules in terms of their draft position. And last week, my encouragement for the board was I was open to try and work through any of these areas after people had had two weeks to absorb all the information. We didn't really get into that last week. I mean, I, other than Commissioner Lindy had asked a great question that I had to follow up with him afterwards and give him a little bit more detail to help. But to the extent that board members have questions about these, this process or these things, obviously, I want to invite that opportunity. But in terms of other information I need to provide, I think I've laid it out about as clear as I can for the board in terms of what the steps are that need to take place, what the sort of timelines look like, what it, what the requirements are, though the rule's not in final form, we got to try and adjust on the fly based on what we have. So I didn't have anything else, Commissioner.
Could I then say that it would be good to repeat what there is agreement on as far as the board makeup and how many positions to add? And if you'd like, I can speak to what I, what I believe going forward the agreement is, and you can correct me, or we can all ask questions.
Are you talking about, are you talking about an agreement between myself and the prosecutor's office?
Yes, you had an agreement on. Why don't, if you could just tell us what you, you agreed upon for the makeup of the board as a pertains to the existing board and adding board members and, and the quantity of those board members and the makeup.
Yeah, there was no agreement within that conversation. As I said, their advice only was that everybody should wait and do nothing until the rules are finalized. So when I asked specifically, does it make sense to have conversations about what the rest of the statute says? They both had told me in that meeting, that was the twenty-eighth, that they had not reviewed this. So there were no other areas that we were really able to get into any, any what I call nitty gritty on this, Commissioner. It was more along the lines of, Elliot, can you help us understand what's going on in these statutes and what the scenario was? So, I mean, I took about an hour-long conversation with them to try and help get them up to speed on where these pieces are. So there was no agreement or disagreement on anything else because they, they weren't aware or up to speed as of that date. I would say the agreement that then came out related to waiting until the rules were completed, I would say by the end of that, that conversation, when I pointed things out to them, that Joe very clearly said that's probably not a good piece of advice to wait till the rules were completed. So I would say that was the only agreement that we had on anything.
Councilmember, Councilmember Byers, I was hoping to recognize that Dr.
I'm about ready to recognize Dr. Cleary. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, James, thank you. James, could you go through with me then the potential timeline by which a decision would be made about the membership of the board? Because presumably, an ordinance would have to be written by the commissioners to decide one way or another to either dismiss the current board and reform it or to add to the current board. And I guess that would probably have to happen at one or two of their meetings. And then can you postulate when that would lead to a change in the board membership if current members were to be dismissed?
I don't, I don't know that I can guess on any of those things, Dr. Cleary, other than to tell you what I've told you before, which is pursuant to the rules as written. There are a couple of things we know for certain. This board and its current composition is not in compliance with the statute. So that, we can all agree on that, and hopefully we can all agree by July first, this board needs to be in compliance. In order for that to happen, there are certain steps that still need to take place. A ordinance needs to be done by the county commissioners pursuant to the rules that establishes a change in the size or composition of the board of health. That's required. That needs to go first. Along with that, there will be other steps related to what is the process? And the language that's used by the rule is what is the process by which the local board of health will select and refer to the county commissioners, the individuals who are the selected applicants that they would vote on to approve. So the ordinance, the first step here, is an ordinance by the county commissioners. In terms of when they, that needs to happen, that's for the county commissioners and the prosecutor's office to decide. But obviously, they have obligations as any other resolution ordinance, et cetera, that they would in theory, go through the steps related to adopting that in terms of how that would work. So that would be step number one. Once that ordinance then goes into place, this local board of health would then need to go through the steps required, and those are the recruitment process. We went through that a little bit a couple of weeks ago. The recruitment process required, as we have talked about before in our past, we have done a thirty-day sort of advertisement, looking for people in certain areas. So that will take a period of time, which is the recruitment piece. In addition to that, you will also have the piece that will essentially require the local board of health to do an interview, and it lays out the process in which how you, the board of health, is to do this. And then the selection process that comes from it. I have informed this board that, in my opinion, a safe timeframe is probably a sixty-day window, especially if we have a thirty-day window of recruiting and advertising. The idea of getting the board together to do an interview related to people who have applied, if you all will remember, that process was not, you know, very easy in terms of putting the pieces together related to the health officer concept. So that is probably going to take a thirty-day window, too. So to me, Dr. Cleary, the steps again are the county commissioners adopting the ordinance that will change the size or composition of this board. Because members clearly, to one degree, needed to be added in order to balance things out. So we're at seven now. If that's adding three more, then you go from there. If there's another change that the commissioners choose, obviously, that needs to be done. Once it's done, then the other steps will be the board of health will recruit, advertise, go through the selection process and the requirements there. And then there's another step that happens after that. Once the local board of health has selected the successful applicant, the way the rules describe it is then the county commissioners must approve that person by a two-thirds vote. So that will depend on the county commissioner's schedule, once a successful applicant is chosen, and that process will need to be done. So there's quite a few steps in this process. In terms of the timeframe, I want to be careful about telling everybody what they need to do, but at a minimum, you're looking at probably a three-month timeframe in order to be effective by July first, considering some of the other pieces and maybe longer. So.
Yeah, Dr. Cleary, I was hoping that Ryan could review again the timeline that he had created, because we have been. Because we have been interested in meeting again the obligations that have been asked of this health district. Thank you, Ryan.
Oh, the timeline, like James had mentioned, is a 30-day advertisement. So if we went beginning of March or even the middle of March, that puts us into the middle of April. Then there's, it's going to take several weeks to do the interviews. And then after that, then the board meeting, family, the last board meeting, regular meeting at the end of May, or the special meeting, middle of June. And then that would give the commissioners about two weeks, two to four weeks where they would do their approval. So we're looking at probably beginning to middle of March, starting the advertisement period.
If I could just add one complexity to that, is that the ordinance requires an open public hearing, which at minimum has to be advertised before, you know, so there's there's a, there's a lot of advertising that we'll need to do. So I just want to make sure we're considering the front-end timeframe as well.
Yeah, and Commissioner, I'm glad you brought that up because each piece of this process, there is the open public meetings requirements on each of it. So that's not only that, that area, but also the interviews themselves are required to meet the Open Public Meetings Act. The decision then to approve also. So again, that's why the timeframe starts to get tight in terms of where we're looking. So.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Dr. Cleary, have your hand raised again?
Yes, I think that's what I was trying to get at, was it looks like we're actually bringing the timeline very close to where we are right now. If we're going to be starting this process in March and the commissioners have to get things announced on their schedule prior to that, I think a decision is going to have to be made fairly soon. I know there's not a desire to tip your hand, but it would be very helpful to have some hint from either Mr. Lindy or Ms. McKinney as to what the plan is. You know, from my own standpoint, we're about to start working on bylaws. I think if there's a desire to not have the elected officials and citizens who are going to write the bylaws contribute in the future, I'm not sure you want us writing the bylaws. So I
With all due respect, and I wish that I could speak more freely, but we're not able to discuss anything related to a decision that we may make in the commissioners' role. We are here to serve as health board members at this time, and I, that's, I realize that is incredibly frustrating. But it is necessary to make sure that we we compartmentalize these roles as required.
Thank you. I'm going to, at this point, interject and ask if Dr. Atterbury or Nyla Duvall, either one are here yet, are present?
They are not on the meeting yet.
Okay, thank you. And we have heard from, at that point, we've pretty much heard from everybody who is present. Because we've heard from Commissioner McKinney, Commissioner Lindy, and Dr. Cleary. And for myself, I would just say that I, if we're looking to be ready by the July 1st deadline for the board to be in compliance, I would certainly urge our county commissioners to move very quickly in making an announcement for a public hearing and having their discussion on how we're going to move forward, what their recommendations are going to be for the ordinance. So.
Councilmember Byers, if I may add as well, certainly, we want to, as a, as a health district, be in compliance with the provisions by July 1st. But there is an added complexity, which is engaging with the American Indian Health Commission and having our tribal representative. And for the, again, to reiterate, we can work on that process, we can support that process. But with sovereign nations, the decision will ultimately be out of our hands in some respects. So we could seat a board but not have full membership by July 1st, which is also an added complexity that we want to, that's why we want to be in the process of engagement. But we really can't do that until there are some formal decisions made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. Yes.
And if I could interject, I would just say that, we'll just say that the points that are made here are well taken as far as, you know, what our role as commissioners and what, what we need to do. So, and I appreciate.
Thank you. And I will say that, you know, Mr. Fresco, that is correct, that it will be up to someone else to appoint the member from the tribe. And I'm wondering what conversation or contact, because regardless of what decisions are made by the, by the commissioners in terms of ordinance for the Board of Health, that person will be on the board by what's going forward with the, with the Washington codes. So my question is, has there been any contact regarding this?
Not by us, and that's also out of respect for the fact that the composition of the board has not been changed or hasn't been in motion. So theoretically, the composition of the board is exactly as it stands today. So we could begin an engagement, but I would be hesitant to do so because decisions have not been made that rest with the county commissioners and out of respect for their process. We, I would think it's premature to engage at this point.
Councilwoman Byers, if I may, give a little insight to just say that so far, the updates that we've received has been that the American Indian Health Commission is taking that lead role of doing the outreach to all of the nation tribes to work on that process internally, as they are the organization that's been designated to make the appointments. Not to say that it would hurt, but I don't think that it will matter because it's, it's a process that the American Indian Health Commission has been charged with, and they're supposed to do that directly with the nation tribes. So.
Yes, and if I may, to support Commissioner McKinney's perspective, the American Indian Health Commission has been fully engaged, but they are doing so on a statewide level.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. It's very helpful, I think, for people to know that there is something happening there.
I would only also add, Councilwoman Byers, that to the extent that this board can take an action in terms of reaching out to the, to the American Indian Health Commission to ask them and seek their selection for our board for this position, I advocated for that roughly a month ago. I still think that's a good idea. Does it need to be done right away? I, I wouldn't say that it would. I would say basically, when, at a minimum, when we begin the process of sort of recruiting and soliciting other board members, that that communication comes from the Board of Health, and that should not be a communication from the Akama Health District. It should be from the Board of Health essentially saying, we are seeking the applicant that we are, that you select in order to be on, on our board. So I didn't know if Commissioner Lindy had something he was going to add to that, but that's, we can take that step as a board, and I'd encourage you to consider doing what we're doing, other recruiting and selection of other members.
So as I understand you, I'm sure you're suggesting is that the board write a letter to the American Indian Health Commission to say that we are, we are seeking their recommendation so that, that they'll know that we're actively listening and ready to, to do that.
And it's even, it's even stronger than that, actually, it's not seeking their recommendation, it's seeking their selection. And I think that's an important distinction because that commission will actually select the person, and this board accepts them. That is end of story. There's no county commissioners approved by a two-thirds vote. It is they select, that person is on the board. And frankly, I know the American Indian Health Commission has said that selection might not happen till later on in the game. And if that's the case, I just want this board to be in a position where we can come back and say, we tried, we did our part, seeking their selection, we took our steps necessary. They can choose to add that person at the time that they select. But on our end, I want to make sure we're covered in terms of making our effort to seek that selection from them. At a minimum, no one then can say, well, you guys didn't do your part, which is sort of where I'm, I want to be away from that. So.
It would be in agreement with that. Go ahead, Commissioner McKinney.
Sorry, could we, I'm in full support of that letter. I'm just wondering if we could also be very specific when we state that we are seeking their selection for the single seat?
Well, I, I want to be careful in writing that right now because frankly, the county commissioners, you have not decided whether that's just one position or not via ordinance. So.
My understanding is that the tribal representation is limited to one.
I can tell you, that's my reading of it. That's the way the statute reads. I know the
I thought the only disagreement, and I could be wrong, I thought the only disagreement was that, according to the American Indian Health Commission, that they were under the, their interpretation was that every tribal nation who had rights within the jurisdiction where the health board had jurisdiction was to receive a seat. And so that is, that's why I said singular, because it is the state's the intention of the billmaker sponsor was that there would be one nation representative on each health board. But that the American Indian Health Commission has taken the interpretation to mean tribal representation is only tribal representation if a individual was chosen from within their tribe, by their tribe, and that every, every nation who has rights of any kind should be given the ability to have a seat on the health board in that jurisdiction. So.
If, if the American Indian Health Commission has changed their position on that, that's different from what I heard at a prior WASC meeting, in which my understanding was they were saying there should be a representative related to each representative tribe. So I took from that meeting that they were actually suggesting, and based on some of the changes in the draft rules, that that might mean more than one tribal representative on a board. So I'm telling you my legal opinion, which is the way I read the statute, and I agree with your reading, that as far as I'm concerned, there should legally only be required to be one. But to the extent that we identify as a board of health, I think that needs to wait till the county commissioners identify that in your ordinance. I mean, if, because in theory, you could say you want to have what AIHC is saying. You could have multiple tribal representatives. So I want to be careful that this board of health does not write a letter that says one with the idea that the county commissioners could still, in theory, do something greater than one. So that's why I would caution that.
And if I, if I may also, Councilmember Byers, a point of clarification. The number of tribal representatives on the board will change the number of equal members between elected and non-elected. So the, the purpose of the bill was to create an equal number of elected and non-elected members of the board. If you have more tribal representative, that changes the number of members of the board. I don't want to interpret that because, again, the decision legally to create the composition of the board rests with the Board of County Commissioners. So.
Clear as mud.
But, but in fairness, in fairness, regardless of the irony that we are being required to make a decision and move forward with responsibilities by July 4th, nonetheless, we will not meet the deadline unless decisions are made soon, which concerns me because we will not be in compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. Do we have any other comments, questions, or motions by the board at this point?
Well, I guess I would just mention that the recent meeting with the tribal council, you know, the AIHC had not reached out to the tribe at that point. So we're hoping that they do so soon.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. So my, my question is this, Mr. Elliott, in terms of this conversation and in terms of your previous recommendation, are you looking for a motion by the board to have a letter sent?
I, I'm not. In fact, in terms of a letter to the American Indian Health Commission, is that what you're saying, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's a need to do that right now. I, I think that when the process begins related to the recruitment of other board members, I think that should sort of be seen as our recruitment related to that, that the letter should come out. And again, that's going to be a step taken after the county commissioners have adopted their ordinance related to this. So right now, no, but during the recruitment process for other board members, I say absolutely.
All right. Thank you so very much. All right, we are going to move on then to item five on the agenda, which is new business. And Commissioner McKinney is going to talk about the CDC.
Councilmember Byers, I apologize. I believe under unfinished business, we have a, Dr. Cleary has a
Well, I, I beg your pardon, sorry. I totally missed that. Thank you very much, Mr. Fresco. Dr. Cleary, we have a process of creation for the Board of Health agenda that you wish to address?
I think this is just a continuation of, of what I brought up at the last meeting. I just had a, I've had a feeling that the board was not really meeting our, all of our duties by the way our agendas were structured. And I've, I've looked back at a lot of the public health bylaws and descriptions of what board members and boards are supposed to accomplish. And essentially, we're supposed to be becoming knowledgeable of all the aspects of the health district. We're supposed to be advising and supporting the health district and the delivery of all of its mandated services. And we're supposed to be supporting and promoting the role of the health district and, and public health measures in general in the community. We're supposed to be developing partnerships in the community to help promote the mission. And we're also supposed to be evaluating our own performance. And I felt like our agendas have been kind of one-sided. We've become a COVID policy discussion group with very little action being done, very little actual education of ourselves about the other services the health department provides. And we've certainly not been contributing to many of the other services the health district provides. So I, I thought we needed to just kind of maybe think about some priorities for our agendas. The priority should be that we accomplish our duties as a board of health. We certainly need to, you know, review the standing items, receive reports, you know, go through the budget. But we should be making sure that every agenda highlights, you know, one or more areas and programs to educate the board and give the board members a chance to contribute to those services and be knowledgeable about them so we can contribute to the community about those services as well. And members are still able to contribute items. I, I think that's fine. But we should be trying to select items that are timely issues and ones that are actually within the purview and the scope of the health district. We often talk about things that are beyond our legislative, we don't have any legislative ability so that they're not anything we can legislate, nothing we can vote on, nothing we can change. And it doesn't get us anywhere to discuss those, those items. They may be of interest to certain members, but I think we should prioritize our real duties as a board of health first before we, we get into just mere discussion. And when members provide information for discussion or put a topic on, they should be prepared to actually discuss it and not just bring, you know, opinion pieces. But if they have an article that needs to be read, they should have that thing wired. They should know every detail of that paper, be able to explain it, provide copies to all of the members, and the other members should be reading these things. I'm concerned that even with House Bill 1152 in our last discussion, and it appeared that many of the members had not read the House bill. And many of the articles we've talked about is clear that there wasn't knowledge of what was actually in the papers. And if these papers are being put forward as legitimate reasons to actually make policy decisions, then they should be investigated. There's always been this push for data, but when you have the data right there in front of you, we shouldn't be talking about somebody's opinion of the data. We should be talking about the actual data if it's going to influence what we recommend or what we do in the future as a public health department. So I don't, I am not, you know, proposing a specific formula, but I think that giving the chair of the Board of Health and one of the administrators, both Ryan and Andre, the opportunity to control a little bit more of the order and the prioritization of our agenda, we will actually get more done and we'll feel like we're actually doing the work of a board of health.
Thank you, Dr. Cleary. And before we move on, I'd like to recognize that Councilwoman Nala Duvall is on, is in the meeting now. So we have a formal announcement of that. Discussion. Discussion.
Dr. Clary, would you say that you're pleased to see Director Fresco's recent update beginning in January where we do at our regular scheduled health board meeting have a presentation on, on important topics of things that we haven't been able to get to because of COVID? And, and would you say that's been helpful and fulfills the aim and your desire to bring up this topic?
Well, that, that's been a topic that I've pushed for, for a long period of time. And Andre and I have discussed that many times and, and I think that is the result of some of our conversations is that we were not paying attention enough to the, the rest of the activities. So I think that's exactly what we need to do and we need to emphasize all of the activities of the health board. And if we need to get in two or three, I, I think we've had maybe three presentations on other services in the last 18 months. And that's, that's inadequate to, to have been on the board, you know, for a year and to not have heard of another half dozen to dozen services. We actually need to make up some lost time.
I agree and I'm.
Commissioner McKinney, I'm going to ask you to wait because we have other people waiting to address. Commissioner Lindy, go ahead please.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, COVID has probably kind of thrown some of the rules of normal out the window, but but on the other hand, I do appreciate the fact that we did have that presentation in January. I think that was on approach to, to disabilities, if I remember right. Anyway, I thought it was great. I appreciate that. That's something we should continue to do. It's, it's, it's good for us as board members to get that broader feel for, for everything, you know, get, get some orientation on, on, on the broad scope of what the health district duties are.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindy. Does anyone else have comments or questions at this point? If not, we can go back to Commissioner McKinney.
Oh, no, I was just saying that I'm, that's why I'm so pleased that we have our special agenda meeting because it does help us to be able to have the opportunity to our regular agenda meeting to have that presentation. And, and Dr. Clary, I think even if there's time to do too, that would be great as well. There's lots of great programs to talk about.
Councilmember buyers, if I may, I'd like to share that this is all welcome and we're looking forward to that. We've increased the number of hours we spend at our board meetings to three from two. We're having two more meetings. I will share with you that, again, as Commissioner McKinney aptly said, when we are meeting together, we're meeting together as members of the Board of Health in your roles. Certainly we want to support that. I will share, this has been a very complicated, difficult process with COVID. But there have been many discussions that have become platforms about people's personal perspectives on laws that we at the health district don't control or initiatives that we have differing opinions on. So it has been, I would say divisive. And actually it's not strengthening our role collectively of working to improve the community's improved health. So I'm grateful that we are working more in unison. But I ask that to continue because there may be times in the near future where there are difficult discussions and disagreements. But again, if the purpose is for us to unify in these meetings to make objective decisions that improve the health and welfare of the community, that's really what we're looking forward to.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. As I had talked with Mr. Iback earlier in the week, there was a question about does the board wish to develop some type of a process for putting forward an agenda for the meetings? Comments on that from the board?
Mrs. Nyla Dubalk, may I speak?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I, I actually would encourage some type of process where we would maybe fill out a a form with, with the title of the discussion. The, the purpose of why we are bringing this topic and, and why it should be put on the agenda. Because when, when I see new business agenda items, I don't understand why they're placed on there sometimes. If an article isn't provided or if a, a motion is not proposed in the agenda, I just really never know where the conversation or the discussion is going to go. So if there's a, a title provided, the purpose of why it is being discussed and, and have the, the person that is wanting to put the, this item on the agenda, also tie it back into how does this support the mission of the Yakima Health District, I think would be helpful in placing items on the agenda.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, any comments?
I would just also comment, I, I think it's the polite way to run a meeting to allow each person to have the opportunity to speak before the first speaker speaks again. I think that would be very reasonable on selection of agenda items to perhaps give each person a, a chance to put an agenda item on. If there's a timeline that is being trying to be held to, then once the, the entire time of the meeting is, seems to be usurped, then no other additional items could be added. But it would be nice if it would sequentially be offered to each of the members to put an item on and not have the, you know, the entire agenda be controlled by the first person to, to call in. Cause I, I believe Dr. Atterbury had wanted to get something on the agenda. And I had wanted to get something on the agenda and we both just missed the, the timeline of being there a week ahead and was told that, well, we already have a bunch of things on the agenda already. And so it, it would give everybody more of an opportunity to contribute.
Thank you, Dr. Clary. And, and let me, let me say this because one of the things that was asked of me is, you know, how does the city establish our agenda? We have a, you know, agenda format, but there's always council, there's always, I'm sorry, city reports. So we need the department in the city, much like what happens here with the health, with the health district. Staff that need to make reports are given the opportunity to do that and council persons are given the opportunity to ask questions about that. One of the things I find helpful on the city agenda, two things actually, one is that if there's something that is an action item in the agenda, it says that. So the council will know ahead of time that there's likely going to be a motion or an action taken on something. And come prepared with, you know, with having read, read the material and prepared to discuss it and, and move forward on an action. The other thing is that any council person may request that any item be placed on the agenda. And that generally has happened under new business for the end of the meeting. And there can be some discussion and out of that comes a motion. So most of all, this may be helpful for, for what you're asking. Out of that comes a motion to bring a particular agenda item to the next business meeting or the next special meeting or the next study session, whatever happens, or to bring it up in, you know, in a month, depending on how much time it's going to take to work on that. But there's a motion made and that motion then is moved forward by the council to place that item on the agenda.
I, no, I would just like to comment if I could, Director Fresco, list that was in response to Councilwoman Byers. Did you, were you responding to Councilwoman Byers?
No, I'm happy to wait. Thank you.
I, my understanding is that every single person on this board has had the same opportunity and is aware of the same deadline into which they need to provide an agenda item request to Victoria. I think we worked on that for some time over the summer. So my understanding from Dr. Clary is that more than likely, as you mentioned, your item was not there simply because it didn't make the cutoff. Rather than because there wasn't enough time, because we always can list our items and has, has happened several times. It can be tabled if we don't get to it until the next meeting. So I believe that I'm supportive of any member having the opportunity to add items to the agenda. As we have all had that opportunity throughout my tenure on this board to, to my knowledge, and we've all well known what the process is. One thing, Dr. Clary, that you had mentioned was that you didn't want any single person to usurp, you know, the meeting. And I would say that again, every single member on this board has had the equal opportunity to bring forward agenda items for discussion. Council on Buyers, to your point, I think we have a great agenda that actually Victoria's worked really hard on. Similar, it actually does list. And if you submit an item to Victoria, she will then ask you, what's the strategic goal? And then what is the board, what is the action item? Is it going to be a, a, is it discussion? Is it input? Is it, is it going to have a, a, a vote or action by the board so that there is an advanced knowledge there so that people can come prepared? And typically, you know, there are articles that are linked and provided if there's one specifically or it might just be general conversation. But I think this is supposed to be representation by health board of the public. And sometimes the public has questions that are not answered by the advertising that goes out by the health department. There requires further clarification. There's a lot of questions and I think during COVID, we've all had a lot of questions. And I think it's fair, and I know I've said this before, that, that it is our role, especially during this particular pandemic, to spend the time to bring forward the questions and concerns that the public have brought forward to each of us as members representing the people in our community. And I'm willing to give them that time. And I know that everyone else here as well. And I think we've done a good job doing so.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinney, I wasn't also suggesting that we limit, just suggesting a process. Does the board want to look at a process? So thank you, Mr. Fresco.
Thank you, Councilmember Byers. There's two pieces of this that I think are necessary to discuss. One is that certainly we want to welcome the input of board members in terms of agenda items, but there is a complexity because if we're being asked to perhaps have more robust things like two spotlights or two issues or agendas that are discussing the work of the board. And certainly the work of the staff members of the health district on behalf of the community, that takes time to have those conversations. So if the, if the board is welcome to that, I would, I would absolutely like to invest more time in an explanation of how and why we do those things. But that also in terms of time limits will reduce some of the discussions that the board members may have about individual agenda items that they select. I don't want that to be misconstrued as limiting board members from their opportunity to have a platform to speak. But we do have a conflict here which has been imbalanced for a while, as Dr. Clary mentioned. There is ongoing work that we do. And the point is also that as a structured public service agency, we do things according to a strategy and a purpose, and those purposes have to be explained. So we need that time. The, the other is, as Dr. Clary mentioned, the potential to be able to change or direct some of the agenda items so that they benefit the larger discussion. But that could be construed as limiting the voice of the board. There have been times where there have been agenda items that I actually think were counterproductive to the work that we're attempting to do. But in terms of respecting the board's position of full disclosure and transparency and access, those agenda items were hurt. But it is a complexity and we will need direction from the board on how to create agendas. As Dr. Clary mentioned, if as an example, the board chair or vice chair has the opportunity to limit or change or direct or postpone, those are all things that we'll have to have direction on in order for that to work.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. And let me take a moment to acknowledge that Dr. Atterbury just got on and is now in the meeting.
Welcome. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm late.
Thank you for being on. Do we have further discussion by the board?
If there's nothing else, I would like to say one more statement in response to Director Fresco's comment.
Go ahead, please.
The role of the members of the health board is sometimes to call into question policies by people who are following through for programs and legislation. In our legislative body, for example, there's no limit to the amount of bills that someone can propose and they do not have to go and ask permission whether or not they can bring a bill forward on behalf of their constituents. I feel very strongly on this matter that having anyone limit what might be a minority voice to bring up an item that they feel is compelling to bring forward for discussion. That that's a dangerous precedent to set. And that we already have a process in place, which is that if an agenda item is brought forward and there's no further discussion, then there's no further discussion. And it's tabled and it's moved on. So the lack of the desire to discuss a motion by anyone else resolves the problem itself. And I think again, I would strongly recommend creating any process to which a small group of people, especially non-health board members, would deem whether or not they decided it was appropriate or relevant enough to have a topic brought up by a health board member who proposed it.
Let me just say, Commissioner McKinney, that, that I agree with that. I think that when, when we start saying we want to limit what people can talk about in in a policymaking board, when we have, you know, lots of different constituents, you know, that can be problematic. So it, it appears we have a greater process in place than I even thought about the structure of how it is. And I, I think that we all understand that there is a deadline for bringing a topic up and a process to get that on the agenda. I think it would be helpful in doing that if the, if the person who is proposing an agenda item would indicate whether or not they want action on it in a certain period of time, you know, like at the next meeting, whenever it comes up. I certainly would encourage the board to continue as, as things come in to read everything that is submitted to us so we can have robust conversation and all opinions are, are heard and respected. I'll just leave it at that. And I think somebody had their hand up. Was it, Commissioner Lindy, go ahead, please.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Byers. I would just like to add in here that, you know, I understand that because of COVID and, and, and the concerns that are out there, that we're having more meetings that used to happen in the past and we're having longer meetings in the past and than we have in the past. And I, I understand, you know, people get tired sometimes. There's a lot going on and, and everybody's working real hard, you know, due to the situation we're in right now. But I'd also say I really hesitate to put any kind of limits on what we can discuss. I, I just, I think we've got to be really careful with that. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindy. Do we have any other comments by board members? All right. Hearing nothing further, are we ready to move on then to new business? Okay, let's do that. Under new business, we have Commissioner McKinney who wishes to address the board about the CDC MMWRs. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman Byers. So the first MMWR, I brought it up and had Victoria forward it immediately following the meeting. And this was carried over from the last meeting. But this is the NMWR that is from January 19th, 2022.
Commissioner McKinney, for the, for the benefit of the public, would you please give us the, the words for the acronym MMWR?
Oh yeah, sorry. Thank you. This is the Centers for Disease Control Prevention's Morbidity or Mortality Weekly Report. It is available online and it does come out weekly. For reference, this is January 19th, 2022, and this is volume 71. This report is specific to hospitalizations for COVID based off of vaccination status and previous COVID diagnosis. And what it does is it breaks down between May and October for California, the hospitalizations for people who were unvaccinated and had no previous COVID-19 diagnosis. People who were vaccinated with no previous COVID diagnosis. People who were vaccinated and had had a previous COVID diagnosis. And people who were unvaccinated, who also had a previous COVID diagnosis. And, and I'm happy to speak freely about why it's important. And I bring this up because what we're hearing from public health officials And I bring this up because what we're hearing from public health officials is that vaccination is the only way to protect against infection of COVID. We can talk about how important it is for certain people with, who are immunocompromised, who have corollaries, that they would consider getting the vaccine. But for everyone, especially if you're someone who's already had COVID, what this report shows is that there is absolutely an incredible amount of immunity and protection for being hospitalized and, and having a death occur if you have had previous COVID, the COVID diagnosis, whether you were vaccinated or not. I think it's important to acknowledge it because this contradicts, quite frankly, what we hear a lot from our state public health directors. Because we've been told for months and months and months that natural immunity does not protect against COVID. So I would encourage everyone to go through and look at it. And I bring this up for, for comment among the board because this isn't subjective. This is very objective. But what we're hearing as a matter of public policy is subjective. So here you will see, if you look at the graph, which is on page five of this report, if you're watching and would like to look at it, it is clear that you have much higher rate of going to the hospital for COVID if you were never diagnosed with COVID before and you were unvaccinated. It is crystal clear. But the line between those who are unvaccinated but had previously had COVID and the line between who were vaccinated and had previously had COVID is indistinguishable, meaning natural acquired immunity does protect against COVID. And I might add, if you recall, that the first cases of Omicron occurred in December 1st, I believe, is the date that they're marking as the, the wave of Omicron beginning. This is May through October 31st for the Delta variant. So it's really important, and I just want to bring it up for public consumption because natural immunity matters, and we should celebrate it.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinney. Councilwoman DeVall, your hands raised. Go ahead, please.
I, I'm just speaking for myself, and I, I don't ever recall receiving the report that you just, that you just described to us right now. Did anybody else see it? I, I'm, I'm just saying that I just, again, was not, I'm trying to show that we were not prepared to have this discussion because I didn't know what, where this MMWR discussion was going. And I, I'm not looking at the graph. I'm not, I'm not seeing what you're seeing. So it's kind of hard to discuss.
I can resend that to the board right now.
Thank you, Victoria. That, we would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. DeVall, for bringing that forward. We have comments by any other board of health member? All right. Yes, Dr. Clary.
I, I don't think there's any real controversy here. This is kind of old news. We know that people who have gotten infected, particularly per individual strain, do acquire some immunity when further exposed to that strain. It, it's really just a matter of which would you rather do? Get infected by each individual strain of, of COVID or have a vaccination? And so if your choice is to get ill multiple times, then perhaps you would acquire immunity to getting ill yet another time. But it doesn't necessarily protect you to either be just vaccinated or just infected. It's all been pretty clear that the, the best option is to have both. But if you gave me the choice, I would rather be vaccinated than infected. And everybody has their own choice.
Thank you, Dr. Clary. Dr. Barg, your hand is raised.
Yeah, so fortunately, I did get the article and read through it. And I think it's important to point out that most of this is Delta data. So when you look at it, by the way, it's very hard to read in the paper. It was all jammed together in one paragraph. But they point out that there's a range. First of all, I would do want to say that there's nobody in the public health community that I'm aware of that doesn't believe there's a benefit to having had COVID as far as protecting you against severe disease. I've never heard anybody say that having COVID doesn't help at all. And when they break this down, they look at complications that rates are the highest in the unvaccinated people and no prior infection. So there's no immunity at all. And they go on and progress and show that the combination of having COVID plus getting vaccinated is great. It's a really, really good thing. But of course, the risk of having COVID is either having severe disease or having long-term effects that one of the community wrote in about last meeting about how to, how to handle that. We did send them, by the way, a referral to a special clinic that's available at University of Washington. So the graph, actually, the scale is based on the rates of hospitalization on people that have no vaccine and no prior infection. So if you expanded the rates, there are small differences between unvaccinated and having previous COVID and vaccinated and not having COVID and then vaccinated and having COVID. So it's, it's, it's hard to get your hands around all that. So the other point I want to make is, you know, I mean, it's great that you get any protection. I think everybody likes that. The CDC, at the end of that article, still says that vaccination plus booster provides the best protection in a environment of changing strains. So, you know, there could be an instance where, for instance, Delta immunity isn't that good at protecting against Omicron, but the vaccine and the booster are good against protecting against serious illness and hospitalization with Omicron. So the, there's a difference between all the strains that have come out and all the strains that may come out in the future. People will work on modifications to the vaccine, just like they've done with influenza, to hopefully, if we get a mechanism anticipating the next strain, what might happen. Or we get a universal vaccine, which is under investigation right now, we'll be better off in the future. So time will tell us how great vaccines are. And hopefully, if people get vaccinated at a higher number, we'll have less COVID overall. So I'd like to support getting a vaccine instead of getting COVID. But once you have it, you know, you have it, and it'll protect against some future infections, but probably not all future infections.
Thank you, Dr. Barg. I appreciate that. And please remember to take your hand down off of the screen. Do we have any other comments to be shared by members of the board?
Councilmember Byers, I'd like to defer to board members that I would like to share something at, at the time.
Right. Thank you. So let me say, first of all, Dr. Barg, you mentioned that somebody in the, in the health district had contacted the district about how to handle some long-term COVID issues, and you made a referral. I really appreciate the fact that you did that. It's great to know that things are working well in, in that direction. And I also want to, to thank all of the board members for weighing in on the different topics. You know, we can have robust conversation. We aren't going to agree on everything, but I think that the conversations for the, you know, for the broad spectrum of the community are, are good. So, all right, anyone else before Mr. Fresco speaks?
I, I'll follow up with, after Dr., excuse me, director. I just upgraded you, Andre, to Dr. Director.
I'm waiting for the raise.
I thought we just gave you one.
But not as a physician.
Go ahead, Mr. Fresco.
Thank you. I was just going to share that I don't think there's ever been a contention that there, that, that natural immunity doesn't work. One of the concerns is that we don't know when it wanes. And so that is one of those issues where you can have natural immunity, but it may not protect you long-term the way vaccines do. And I would also respectfully share that receiving natural immunity is hard earned. Many people have ended up certainly very sick, loss of job time, concerns for spreading to their family, certainly being intubated or being long-term hospitalized, having long-term health effects. And sadly, many people have died. I'm sure they would have happily lived and had natural immunity. I would have preferred for them to be vaccinated and not have the opportunity to lose their life. So I share with you that there are tragedies abounding in this because it is a gamble to, to end up with natural immunity. We want to protect people. And as Dr. Barg said, taking every possible opportunity to protect yourself, protect your community, protect your friends and family, those who come in contact, this is what we're advocating for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fresco. And actually, that just kind of parlay's right into what I was going to close with, which is that the reason why it is important, though, and we can say that, and I'm happy to say that now we're widely acknowledging natural immunity, but the problem is that our policies are not. And there are people who are still under threat of losing their job because even though they have naturally acquired immunity, and they can provide proof of that, that they're going to or have already lost their job. And that is why discussions among health boards across the state like this are so important, because we can look at this data and say, it is important to acknowledge natural immunity. And we can send a message to the leadership at our state level and say, we don't agree with not acknowledging natural immunity and having people under threat of losing their livelihood because they have natural immunity and, as the data shows, are protected against COVID infection similar to that of someone who received a vaccine. It's not advocating for or against a vaccine. Certainly, I'm not suggesting someone should go get naturally acquired immunity on purpose. But if someone has had COVID, they should not lose their job because they make a choice not to then go get the vaccine.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinney. And Dr. Clary, your hand is raised.
I just wanted to kind of follow up on Director Fresco mentioning the, the cost of acquiring natural immunity. And I just remind people again that the out-of-pocket costs in Washington State for just ER visitor or plain hospitalizations, about $8,000 to acquire that natural immunity. And if you actually end up in the ICU, usually end up with $30,000 or more in costs as compared to a free vaccine.
Thank you, Dr. Clary. Do we have any other comments by members of the board? If not, then we will move on to item 5B, which is the pediatric COVID-19 hospitalization. Again, Commissioner McKinney, you brought this forward.
Thank you. And then what I'm going to use to reference for discussion is our own situation report that we've all been receiving and looking at. So there isn't anything to attach. But what struck me is that we were looking at first, you know, that we're seeing a much larger amount of pediatric hospitalizations. And I began focusing more on this when we started to see that pediatric number rise. And really, when I was trying to drive towards getting a greater understanding of what is the difference between our numbers for hospitalizations due to COVID because someone entered with something else and they were simply found to be COVID positive? Or were they, were they actually there because they were experiencing symptoms and hospitalized because of COVID? Now, that's a different debate. We've talked about that, and our hospitals are saying they don't have the time, which I hope they find the time like the other area hospitals, but maybe they'll get there. What I'm looking at, though, is that when we actually have these wonderful, and I hope you all noticed, the graphs have been updated, the, the charts are even, they're fantastic. So I just want to say, Melissa, thank you to all of you who are working on this because it is, we're getting better and better. And it is impressive, super impressive. And I thank you for all the work. But the new graph that I thought was really interesting and showed us the, the side-by-side, which is what I had wanted to see, the 2020 versus 2021 versus year-to-date 2022. And it's important because if you look at the COVID cases for ages 0 to 19, in 2020, we had 3,180 confirmed cases of pediatric COVID, 0 to 19 to 2020. In 2021, we had 6,685 cases, confirmed cases of COVID in 0 to 19. And in January of 2022, we had 7,007 confirmed cases of COVID. And so when I saw that, I thought, okay, well, that's, that's, we weren't sure how far our leg, our numbers were lagging because tests coming back. But when we finally, after a week now, can look back, you know, the number of hospitalizations for pediatric hospitalizations is actually not so alarming. The 7,007 positive cases resulted in 15 hospitalizations. Again, we don't know whether or not because of COVID or with COVID. But the number for 2021, with a case count of 6,685, was 37. So more, in one month, we had as much cases as we had the entire year in 2021 and half the hospitalizations. And the reason why I want to draw attention to that is because I think that is something to celebrate. It confirms that Omicron does not have the impact that we, you know, of course, we're fearing what other variants would have. But also that the R-nos, and Dr. Barg can certainly step in here after I'm done and talk about the R-nos, but my understanding has been, according to the CDC, that the R-nos for the original COVID variant was two to three. And that for Delta, it was estimated at six and a half to eight. And if we all remember back, the R-nos is, how many people will you infect if you become infected? You can, you can go into more detail, Dr. Barg, if I get it wrong. But we know that Omicron was so virulent, that it spread so quickly, that it was upwards, I think you even said, Dr. Barg, nearing measles. And the CDC is saying it is between eight and 15. So food for thought, if you took the lowest end of the R-nos estimate for all of our pediatric cases, so 3,180 for 2020 at an R-nos of two, 6,685 at an R-nos of six and a half, and 7,007 cases at an R-nos of eight, that gives you 105,868 pediatric cases for those 0 to 19 in Yakima County. The estimated population of Yakima County's 258,200, of which 30% are said to be in that age group, which is 77,500. So it is important to actually take a step back and look at the data and say that, again, we're not encouraging people to get COVID, but Omicron brought it all to our doorstep pretty quickly. And we have a lot of folks, and especially our kiddos, who have now naturally acquired immunity. And I just open it for discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinney. Dr. Barg, do you have anything you wish to share?
Well, it's looking at age-related cases. It is really high right now in the teenagers and older kids. And that also, at the same time, it's a really low vaccination rate in those same kids. So getting in the hospital is not necessarily the only bad thing that can happen. Kids can miss school. They could feel really bad and infect older people. So reducing the cases is good and reducing hospitalization is good in both ways. There are, I think, more people nationwide, more kids nationwide. So our experience here maybe is less serious than other areas of the state and other areas of the country. And it could change. You don't know. It could go up in a couple of weeks. Hopefully, it'll go down. So we'll have to see. And Delta is different than Omicron. It takes fewer people to get infected to create severe disease. But if the number of Omicron infections go up, there's still that tail, follow-up tail of people, the kids that get severe disease. And hopefully, the cases will go down and so will the hospitalizations. Just to clarify a point from earlier in the meeting, there's always a lag between getting infected, the number of people getting infected, and the deaths in hospitalization. It's because, you know, more people are infected. It takes time to get sick enough to go in the hospital and time to get really sick once you're in the hospital. So as the number of cases go down, hopefully, number of hospitalizations and severe illness will go down in a couple of weeks. So we, we should see that. And remember, earlier in January, we were all hoping by the end of January, early February, things would go down. And thankfully, that's happened. So I think we're in better shape.
Thank you, Dr. Barg. And Dr. Clary, your hand is raised. Go ahead, please.
I think one important thing to remember is that, you know, we're taking this, these numbers all the way back to 2020. And it's not clear that And um it's not clear that immunity to the Alpha variant uh or the Delta variant in the past is in the least bit protective. And there are certainly uh multiple cases of children uh who are unvaccinated having COVID illnesses more than once. Uh, and so I don't think you can do a simple calculation by adding up all the numbers over three variants over three years and claim that that's how many people are now enjoying natural immunity. I think if they're not vaccinated and have not been infected very recently, within the last three months or so, um, their level of immunity is is very questionable. So I I am concerned that the numbers are still so low for vaccination for children. Um, I'm pleased to see some of the numbers go down with Omicron. But uh I agree also with Dr. Barg that we are not out of the woods yet. We're still likely to see more hospitalizations. And obviously, we've been seeing more deaths uh recently as those kind of lag behind the the case rate.
Thank you, Dr. Clary. And I just wanted to echo Commissioner McKinney in in thanking Lilian and the staff for the tremendous work it takes to create a new metric and included in those reports. That's greatly appreciated. So. Anything else?
Councilmember Byers, I'd like to share, please. While again, um, I am grateful that we are not seeing the number of deaths that we have seen in the past. I will share that there's evidence that says that those who uh are vaccinated, double vaccinated, or have had Johnson and Johnson for a single vaccination but are not boosted, they're still uh vulnerable to receive Omicron. And I would say, again, it's hard earned. This board was very clear last year, well, I guess the last few years, concern about the restrictions that limited commerce, that limited restaurants, that limited uh schoolchildren. Uh, we have seen a devastating effect from Omicron. And even though it may be um easier to get through, if you will, to recover, uh, it's spread very quickly. Uh, we do not have very high booster rates in this valley. We have seen a devastating effect that is represented not only in this valley, but around the state and around the country of restaurants that cannot staff because they do not have enough shifts covered. We have businesses that are impacted economically because they simply cannot um have enough staff to run their operations. We've seen uh multiple airline companies have to cancel flights uh because they cannot staff those airplanes. And that's at every level. Those are baggage handlers and uh ticket takers, flight attendants, pilots. Uh, we have seen a devastating effect by Omicron. And my concern is that if we are not fully vaccinated, if we are not fully protected to the highest levels, which include natural immunity, but also include repeat vaccinations, if we have another surge or another type of COVID, we will remain vulnerable, which will impact everyone in our community, including children who, if they become sick, and many are, have to miss school.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is Johns Hopkins University lockdown study. And again, Commissioner McKinney, you are presenting on this.
Thank you. And Director Fresco, you just spoke to this. So um this study is really important uh because, of course, in the beginning stages of the pandemic, there was a great deal of uncertainty on how to deal with a global pandemic. And um you know, I fully believe that anyone in a leadership role across the globe took a lot of steps that were very difficult to take uh to to try to balance uh public safety, public health uh with all aspects of daily life. Uh, as you say, um, I would say that because of the nature of a virus like this, there's, there's really nothing that we will ever be able to do to eliminate all of our vulnerability and all of our risk, and we will never, ever be fully protected. So it really comes down to to what level of risk are we trying to mitigate down to? Uh, and so this specific study uh looked at a multitude of studies related to lockdowns across United Kingdom uh and the United States. And what it determined was that um the death rate, the mortality rate more specifically, um, across all review of all studies uh was reduced uh by point two percent. And when we go into the depths of the study, and this is Johns Hopkins University, that says, we find no evidence that lockdowns, school closures, border closures, and limited gatherings had a noticeable effect on COVID-19 mortality. The study concluded that lockdowns are ill-founded and should be rejected as a pandemic policy instrument. They have contributed to reducing economic activity, raising unemployment, reducing schooling, causing political unrest, contributing to domestic violence, and undermining liberal democracy. The reason why I bring these things up is because it may seem like subjective things to bring up, but there have been times on this board where many of us on the board were talking about the global picture of COVID and how all of the lockdowns and all of the mitigation efforts that were being done were having a negative effect that exceeded the impact of the virus itself. And now we're having studies that come out that show that all of those measures, despite being well-intentioned, were not the right way to go. And I think it's important for our board to acknowledge these things. As they say, as the science changes, so shall we. And it's important to note that we are coming to a point where we can look back and say, these things didn't work. And I want to be able to have this conversation as a health board, as we are members representing that our community, to know that even though we had best intentions at leadership levels, the call was wrong. And we know that now. And so we know going forward that we won't make those same mistakes again. And that's why I bring this up for discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinney. Any comments from the board? Uh, Dr. Barg, your hand is raised. Go ahead, please.
I would certainly uh yield to any members of the board who want to make a comment before I do.
Thank you. Dr. Clary, your hand is raised. Would you go ahead, please?
Uh, sure. Well, um, this is a fairly easy article to to critique. Um, and I assume uh Commissioner McKinney, you've read this entire article.
Dr. Clary, I have read most of the article, but I didn't read the um all the um, the notate, you know, this is where we cited. You know, I didn't go back and read all the footnotes of citing which studies and all of those things. And if you can ask me if I haven't memorized, no, because I only read through it once.
Well, it is pretty quick to to start out with some of it is false. It's not actually a Johns Hopkins study. So we're right off the bat, um, that's incorrect. And actually, uh, the Johns Hopkins uh University COVID Center has um publicly disclaimed this. This is actually written independently. And it's, if you read the very first paragraph, it it states that this is actually just by three economists uh who are not representing uh their institutions. And if you actually look at who the authors are, um, the the head author, um, Steve Hanke uh has a Twitter feed that is full of just ridiculous statements on fascism and uh calling out lockdowns. And and he kind of tips his his hand to his bias um in over the months prior to this paper. As far as a meta-analysis goes, yeah, I'll let you address whether this was a dynamic or a static set of of inclusion and and exclusion criteria, but he started out with 19,000 articles and uh ended up making those conclusions off of five. So they eliminated the vast majority of 19,000 articles. And they don't even say what databases they used. But essentially, they eliminated all articles that were written by epidemiologists, except for a single one. Uh, they use criteria for inclusion uh that essentially were only uh going to be in papers by economists. And actually, over half of the the papers that they chose, which was only 34. So they start out with 19,000. They came up with criteria to eliminate all but 34. They actually found that that 10 of those, they didn't put into their uh evaluation. And they kept changing their exclusion and inclusion criteria in order to uh what seems to be accomplish uh their goal. They used calculations that are not clear in the paper to weight articles. So some articles were given much more power than others. Uh, and seven of the articles that they used, those 24, were actually of the same database. And it was a a very short database, early in the upswing of cases in Italy. Uh, this wasn't a global study at all. And even their their definition of lockdown uh is not a lockdown at all. Um, they used a a criteria of non-pharmaceutical interventions that included as little as just wearing a mask. Uh, and there was no duration, minimum duration required. They actually gave more weight to some of the studies that were less than 14 days old. So if you intervene and try to stop transmission of a disease and then stop your analysis within 14 days, um, you're probably not going to really see the result because people who were infected already are the only ones that you're going to find. So you won't see any long-term benefit. If you actually look at the the study, and if you've read it, you can look at table seven. It actually did not show that individual um procedures were not beneficial. As a matter of fact, uh, things like shutting down schools and wearing masks showed significant benefit, 24 to 37% reduction in mortality. Try multiplying that by 5 million people. That is a huge number of lives saved by wearing masks. Overall, the the paper is not something you can make any conclusions from. The the articles that they self-selected were obviously biased. 12 of them of the 24 were never even published. They're in in quotes, just like this, a working paper, not peer-reviewed. Um, you cannot really draw any conclusions, even though I made that statement about masks. I wouldn't draw any conclusions from this article. And it certainly contradicts all of the other good articles that have shown a benefit um to interventions to reduce transmission. And that's not a surprise. If you have people that are spreading disease by respiratory droplets and you separate them, you're going to reduce transmission. Um, the the very basis on which this was supposedly um developed was the Oxford Index. And that paper showed a significant benefit to lockdown interventions. Uh, and they excluded that article amongst many other good articles. They excluded those from analysis. So bringing this type of of paper and suggesting that this be something we take to heart, um, you didn't read it or you don't understand it. Um, it obviously is not a testimony to allowing disease to spread and saying that it didn't matter to 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 decrease that.
Thank you, Dr. Clary. Uh, Dr. Atterbury, your hand is raised.
I was just gonna just uh and ask Dr. Clary or anybody really on the panel um whether or not they're suggesting that uh there was an economic benefit to lockdowns. I mean, clearly, that's lunacy. There, there's not an economic benefit to lockdowns. There is a disease prevention benefit, and I think that's what you're iterating uh and and rightfully so. I did read the paper. I I I draw some of the same conclusions you did, though it is a meta-analysis, and meta-analysis oftentimes have the gross majority of the papers that are originally pulled excluded. Uh, I'm not suggesting that this paper was well-written or necessarily thoroughly peer-reviewed. I'm just suggesting that the conclusions they draw are not lunacy, that the economic impact of uh the lockdowns led to a negative overall impact and that that impact possibly outweighed the benefit of the disease prevention. Uh, that that I think you can draw that conclusion safely and say, at least it's food for thought. With that said, okay.
If that was a a question directed to me, no, that there is no economic analysis. This was by economists, but they limit all of their evaluations actually to um epidemiological and clinical factors, which certainly is not their area of expertise. So they didn't address uh any economic benefit as a counterweight to saving lives.
Right. And I don't think that's an easy analysis to do because you'd have to put a value on a life. And that's always a challenging thing to do. With that said, though, I mean, I think that we can say that the 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 draconian lockdowns that they experienced uh over the last two and a half or two years, three going on almost two and a half years now. I think that those certainly have had a negative impact that's been felt around the globe, uh, all over the world. And those, those are not arguable facts. Those are absolutes. We can argue about whether or not it was worthwhile in the end uh for the benefit of disease prevention. I I think that's a noble argument, uh, but it's not, it's not really, I think, the point they're trying to make. But I agree with you. Again, these aren't the best, this isn't the best written paper, nor the best written meta-analysis I've ever read, so.
Thank you, Dr. Atterbury. Uh, Commissioner Lind, your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'd just like to say uh that, you know, I haven't read, I haven't read the article, so I'm not drawing any conclusion from the article. I would just simply say that uh, you know, I don't make any argument about trying to take appropriate steps uh to uh, you know, to help preserve people's health. Uh, certainly, and and it's safe to say that we don't come across pandemics very often. You know, the last one we had was 100 years ago. So it's difficult for us to know coming into it, you know, how to respond and how to react appropriately. But I also think that in hindsight, as we look, yes, there are measures that were effectively taken to help preserve people's health and life. And those are things that we should definitely uh, you know, promote and and work towards. Yet there are also, we can't ignore the fact that when we did, you know, lockdown of businesses, so that people weren't able to provide for their families, uh, you know, or lose their livelihoods, that that's, that's a negative impact. You know, and the fact that when we had our churches closed for several months, that also has a negative impact on people's emotional and and mental well-being, among other things, along with the the fact that people can actually support or support themselves during challenges and difficult times. Uh, you know, and also the fact that I don't think there's any denying right now, although, yes, we wanted to protect our kids by keeping them home, that there was tremendous academic uh fallout from the effects of these. So um, you know, uh, we can, we can talk about the term of lockdown. But I think when we approach these things, hopefully, we do not take, we've learned something from this and do not take the same extreme measures that we did uh start years ago, because there were negative impacts that happened. And we have to balance those risks. Earth health is certainly a risk, you know, physical health to a certain disease. But, you know, I I saw in my position as a hospital that people got so panicked from the disease, they stopped going to the emergency room and they stopped receiving treatment for other illnesses that were also impacting. You know, the fact that we saw drug overdoses that have actually more than doubled in the past two years, death by overdose in Yakima County. That was a fallout from some of these steps that were taken, the isolation and the hopelessness that people felt. And so I just think, uh, you know, moving forward, my my feeling is that we just really have to, we have to think carefully and balance risks. Certainly want to protect people and include, especially those that are most vulnerable among us. But we can't imagine, we have to remember always that there are side effects to every decision we make. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindy. Are there any other comments by Board Health Members? If not, then Dr. Barg, would you go ahead, please?
I think um Dr. Clary elegantly pointed out the faults in the paper. Um, there's only a couple more things that uh I was worried about. The one, they only picked death as the endpoint. Uh, and death is not a full picture of all the things that happen. I mean, serious illness that brings you in the hospital or prevents you from going to work if there wasn't a lockdown. All of those were not considered. Uh, the other interesting thing that I mentioned in there, that the timing of doing a lockdown is really important. So really, the effect of the lockdown, whether you agree with that it should have been done or not, I think that's uh be up for a long debate, but maybe a year from now, two years from now, we'll figure out whether it was worthwhile. But the important thing But the important thing that the paper pointed out is that if you start the lockdown early enough before it spreads, it it might have a better effect, not that I particularly supported or refute lockdown. And it already has spread. Looking backwards, there was already a lot of spread. We didn't know that at the time. The other thing is, when the lockdown was imposed by the state government, the goal was to slow the spread and slow the peak so that the healthcare system wasn't strained. You know, if you look at the models, it looks like that that worked, that that it did do that. To reiterate what Dr. Clery said, the inclusion of pre-prints and published papers weakens the strength of the concepts put forth in there because the pre-prints may not have ever made it to publication due to flaws. But here's the good thing, we're in a different time now. And the effect of a lockdown could be much less because we're doing a better management of critically ill patients, so there's less deaths. We have great vaccines, so there'll be less people getting severe illness. We have really good pre-exposure medications in the form of monoclonal antibody. And we have great post-exposure prophylaxis in the form of monoclonal antibodies and also the drug remdesivir. So the the whole scenario may be different. And if we're lucky, maybe we won't have to do another lockdown. And I haven't heard anybody talking about doing another lockdown. So let's all hope this is something that's only going to happen in the past.
Thank you, Dr. Barg. Any other comments by members of the board?
I just want to say I appreciate Dr. Barg's comment, and I would say that I would just say that rather than hope it doesn't happen, I'd prefer to go on the record, say it shouldn't.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinney. And I would like to say, first of all, this has been, I think this has been a good discussion, a healthy discussion. Thank you, Commissioner McKinney, for bringing it forward. And we, obviously, there are different opinions on every level and from the article itself to what actually occurred and the benefit of anything that happened. I do want to comment that members of the board not evaluate other people's opinions, not evaluate their ability to to read or bring information into the the Board of Health, so I appreciate that.
Oh, yes, thank you so much. I did want to share, I I recognize that this will be a debate, this will be the debate of our time. And we will have to have those discussions. But I would actually like to share that, in reality, regardless of lockdowns that were statewide, because of exclusions for essential businesses, Yakima County was largely open in many respects. We are sixty percent essential business community, which meant that many, many, many businesses continued to operate. And what we saw was sort of a lockdown, if you will, that affected certain parts of our communities and certainly had impacts and certainly was troubling. I recognize all that. But those essential businesses were places where you had massive spread. And we also had a dramatic illness and we had dramatic death. We were at one point in a top ten county for spread, and we had very high rates for hundred thousand for death. And those people who died were often those who were in essential businesses and had to work and became ill and sometimes could not continue to work after COVID and sometimes lost their life. So when we talk about the painful impacts of COVID, we often talk about the things that we don't like or the things that were distasteful or the things that we did not agree with. But there have been dramatic impacts to people's lives that are painful at a family, friendship, community level that we don't spend as much time talking about, which is what happens when someone who had been healthy is now gone. Or what happens when someone who has been the primary provider economically can no longer work. Or what happens for the dramatic painful impact when you lose a loved one? Those are also dramatic pains, and we are, we are suffering those traumas in this community as well. So I just share that plainly that there's, there's no lack of difficulty or difficulty to understand what the path forward should be. And I, again, I think that's part of the portfolio of this health district, is working on some of those issues that are going to be impactful because we do have some of trauma in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. Dr. Barg, do you wish to speak again? Your hand is raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, this paper was brought forth to provide evidence that lockdowns don't work. And I think it's not a good enough paper to do that. There may be other papers that come out that show it. But boy, I'll tell you, I don't think anyone wants another lockdown, including everybody on this meeting. But it, we shouldn't use this as a means of supporting that lockdown shouldn't be done. So let's wait for some better studies.
Thank you, Dr. Barg. I'm wondering if if Councilman Deval, do you have anything you would like to add to the conversation? We haven't heard you in a while.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I think everyone else has had an opportunity to address. So if there's, if there's no further comment, we can move on. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. There you go.
Just thanks. I I would just like to just add this, that I, I am appreciative of the fact that, you know, as we've gone through a couple of waves of of the disease in the last couple of years, I think we actually are in a better spot than we were a couple of years ago in the fact that even though we're trying to to, you know, handle the disease and it's spread through the community, that we do have our businesses open. We do have health restrictions, of course, but we do have the businesses open, and most of the time we have our kids in school and we have our churches open. Yes, we are encouraging, you know, the people be careful and protect vulnerable, vulnerable among us. But I think we are in a better place and have learned some things in the last couple of years. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lindy. Any other comments? I'm sorry, I can't see everybody because the screen is being shared. I missed some of the answers in a while. So it's very helpful if you use actually the raised hand on the bar below because if you're just moving in the picture, it's not always large enough for me to see that, so. Okay, do we have anyone else who wishes to comment? All right, then we, the next thing on the agenda is adjournment. Unless I've missed something, if I'm missing anything, I don't think so.
The council members, if I might say, I know that we've got enough time, and I actually have a new, a new business item that I would like to bring forward for consideration as urgent, but the board can determine. So if I may bring forward the urgent matter and the board can decide if we would like to discuss it tonight as an urgent matter or table it. The urgent matter that I would like to discuss is the announcement that came just yesterday afternoon from School Superintendent Chris Reichdale, who was recommending that the mask mandate in schools statewide be removed. I believe based off of his statement that it warrants discussion this evening, and I do apologize, it just happened yesterday afternoon. And I do think that we should discuss it tonight if enough members of the board agree.
Right. At this point, let me ask, and and could we have a roll call, Ryan, please, so we are clear on this? Do we have this discussion tonight or not? And feel free to, to, when you give your response, feel free to give your, your thinking.
All right. If I, if I may, I'm sorry, council member buyers, I apologize, but I believe the roll call would be the roll call, and then we would have the opportunity for discussion once the roll call has been made.
Okay, all right.
If you don't mind.
We can do it that way. I'm fine. I just thought, as each person voted, they they may want to express the opinion because it may influence somebody else.
Thank you, ma'am.
So you'd like a roll call done right now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so if you would like to continue this discussion tonight, please say yes. If not, please state no. Dr. Clery?
I'd like to take Ms. Byers' suggestion, say that Governor Inslee just made a a statement of reducing mask requirements and is due to update this next week. So I vote to postpone this until he's come out with a statement on masks.
Okay, Commissioner McKinney?
Yes, I would like to discuss this item, as I believe before that recommendation comes out by the governor that this board could potentially do something that might encourage a certain action by the governor.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yes, I'm willing to discuss it.
Councilmember Deval?
Um, well, I I just want to point out that I, I believe that there was a process and there's a deadline to put items on the agenda. I do feel like talking about it right now may be a little bit premature. But I I don't have any objection on discussing this, other than some people might need a bathroom break. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Atterbury?
Yes, I agree with discussing it now. We have a potential to win on the governor's vision, and that's speaking on behalf of the people and the constituents that make up our community.
And council member Byers?
Yes, I am open to discussing it right now because, as Dr. Atterbury stated, this really involves, you know, all of our constituency. This has been an issue that people have gone back and forth on for a long time. And even though it may, it may be premature, it's a governor's decision. We can maybe certainly have the ability to give some input to the governor that might influence that influence that decision on behalf of our constituents. So I would also like to suggest that we take, it is now seven twenty-six. Would everyone be in agreement to a five-minute break so we have opportunity for refreshment of restaurants? Do we have any objections to that? All right, then we will, we will, just if you would just turn your microphones off.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask that if you are back on, that you would turn your camera on so we know that, please. Because we not, we are not in five minutes. Councilman Deval, are you back on? Can you respond to me, please?
Sorry, yes, I'm back on.
Thank you very much. Okay. It appears that all the members of the board are back on, I'm thinking. I'm trying to go through the list here and see everybody. I don't see, Dr. Clery, are you back on, Dr. Clery?
I'm here.
Thank you very much. Okay. Then I believe all the board members are here, and I will call the meeting back to order again, please. So Commissioner McKinney, you raised a question. Would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Byers. I bring this urgent item forward because, if I'll just recap for anyone who joined, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Chris Reichdale, released late yesterday afternoon a press release that I won't read in its entirety, but I will just kind of summarize here. It says, the the headline is Reichdale, From Pandemic to Endemic, It's Time to Remove the State Mask Mandate for Students. And then the below is a statement from the superintendent, so I'll just quickly go through this. The combination of widespread vaccinations and much higher infection-inquired immunity due to the pervasive Omicron variant has changed the landscape of the pandemic once again. I believe it is time to carefully plan our move from a pandemic response to an endemic state of, excuse me, system of readiness. With high immunity rates, the time is now to rebalance the health and educational benefits of masking in our schools. As part of the transition from pandemic to endemic, I believe it is safe and timely to eliminate the statewide masking requirement for students and allow for a decision by local health officials. This change will empower schools to better focus their valuable time on supporting our students' learning and well-being recovery and acceleration. Again, I, that's a paraphrase of a and acceleration. Um, again, I, that's a paraphrase of a, of a two-page media release, um, but the reason why this is very urgent is because, uh, the governor is considering uh, what to do. And I believe, uh, that is a comment upon this board to advocate uh, that local control over decisions such as this, uh, do come back, uh, to local jurisdictions, albeit, uh, the health board, uh, the school boards and school administrative staff, and more importantly than anyone, the parents. And, uh, I am going to move that this board send a letter to Governor Inslee uh, that simply affirms that we are imploring him to end the statewide school mask mandate.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dave, uh, Dr. Atterberry. So we have a, a motion by Commissioner McKinney and a, and a second by, uh, Dr. Atterberry to, uh, that the board would send a letter to the governor imploring him to consider, I don't have your exact wording, I'm sorry. Ryan, can you read the exact wording?
If I need to repeat it, I can. Let me see what I said. I didn't write it down. So I, I moved that this health board sent a letter to Governor Inslee, uh, imploring that he remove the statewide school mask mandate.
Thank you. So that would be the motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to defend your motion?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, do we want to have any other comments first, or would you like me to go?
You go first, you made the motion.
All right, um. This topic has obviously been one that is, um, happening at kitchen tables, uh, not just in Yakima, it's really, it's across the nation. Um, there are many of us mothers and fathers who we're all very concerned about our children. We're all very concerned about how COVID impacts our children, not just the virus, but the, the mitigation, the distance, the, the fear that comes with feeling like you as a child are a threat to the people around you. Um, watching children interact with other adults and seeing them hesitate to embrace. Uh, hearing how difficult it is for younger children to go through the normal standards of learning, of being able to see people's faces, recognize people's faces. The language of, uh, understanding language and movement. It is, as we've talked about earlier, um, there are so many other impacts other than what the virus itself, um, can do to harm our children. I feel very strongly that the masks are something that we can now look at and will look at into the future as something that caused great harm to our children, more so than, um, well-intended, but especially with Omicron not achieving what it's supposed to achieve. The cloth masks that are traditionally worn by all of our kiddos as they go to school uh, have proven to be completely ineffective against curbing Omicron spread. You cannot differentiate between the red hot zones of high spread of COVID across the United States. It doesn't care whether or not your Democratic or Republican governor had a mask mandate or not. It doesn't matter. It is everywhere. And because of that, we have to, with our most precious resource, acknowledge when we've made a mistake. I am absolutely heartened that our superintendent of public instruction has come out in advance. Truly, I believe, to force Governor Inslee into making a decision that he needs to make. It's the right decision to make. And I'm not advocating against masks. I'm advocating that each parent should get to decide whether or not their child has an added layer of protection against something they have a concern about. That's what I'm advocating for, which is why I would like to see Governor Inslee end the statewide mandate so that parents can go back to deciding what's best for their children.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinney. Uh, Dr. Atterberry?
Yeah, I think that, uh, just to reiterate what, uh, Commissioner McKinney stated and, and to look at, in the very specific population of school-aged children, the mask mandates have harmed more than they've helped. That's not arguable. The social, the, the mental health impact of those masks on those children are being reflected in their personal interactions with their families, with their peers, with their teachers, with their schools, with each other. All of that is harm. This is the lowest-risk population to get serious disease and/or die from COVID. And I think that if we look at it as a whole, it is imperative that we claim at least this small thing back from the governor and say the counties should do it. I am heartened to hear that the superintendent of education for the state is asking for that. It was the first thing that came to my mind when I saw states nearby us like California and Oregon, which are very similar, uh, in, in, in demographic makeup uh, to our own. It's not a different science. It's not a different planet. It's not a different country. All of these mask mandates in school-aged children need to go away. If a parent chooses to put a mask on a child, that's their choice. And if the mask, and the child agrees to do that, that's also their choice. I'm certainly not advocating that they shouldn't have the right to do that if that's what they choose, but to make the rest of the population succumb to the whims of some of the population just seems crazy. And, and for that reason, I would ask and I would reiterate that we should write a letter restating really what the state superintendent already asked, and that is mask mandates K through twelve should go away. I also have strong feelings about the work-related loss of jobs, but that's a separate issue and I won't bring it up at this time, but that also should go away and, and we should do everything we can to reverse that. But this one is simple. This one's a no-brainer. And this is one that we should, we should pursue at this time. But hopefully the governor is influenceable at this moment, you know, where he's going to make this decision. I don't know what's taking him another week, actually, frankly. It seems like this one is an easy political fodder, uh, to, to, you know, make sense, good policy, all the above. So we should help him in that decision and just send him a letter stating we, we believe that strongly.
Thank you, Dr. Atterberry. Dr. Clary, your hands raised?
Um, well, I think when he made the announcement on Wednesday, um, Dr. Shawatt also, uh, made some comment on the, the curves of pediatric cases in, um, the state and, uh, showed that there were some counties that were, you know, just now getting over the peak. And so that was it was the, the point of, of making a decision at an appropriate time was just, um, seeing that that was continuing to fall throughout the state. Um, coming up with a letter now is kind of like the superintendent. I mean, uh, I hate to say it, but Governor Inslee already said he's going to do it. To now tell him to do it, it seems a bit silly. He's, he's already stated that he's going to provide the details of when the state will end COVID nineteen emergency mask requirements that cover schools and businesses. So now we're going to tell him what he just told us he was going to do? It, I, I don't know why we would bother at this point. If you want to give some specifics, if you want to propose a date, provide some useful information about, um, how that, uh, could be implemented or how that Yakima County is following the recommendations of school superintendents to put policies in place to allow students to continue to, to wear them if they want, to have an effective opt-out way to prevent bullying of those who continue to wear masks, how to protect the, uh, teachers. And if you want to get input from our local superintendents or our teachers' union, um, that might be useful to put in the letter. But just to say, do it after he's already said he was going to do it, doesn't make any sense to me.
Um, if I could just, if I could just acknowledge real quick.
Commissioner McKinney, can you wait till the people have a chance, please? Thank you, Dr. Dr. Clary. Um. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Duval, would you like to speak to the issue?
I would. Um, so this, this is a, a really hard, um, decision to make and, um, for me, I just feel like I, I'm not, I, I don't have a medical certificate or background. So I cannot say when it is timely to remove the masks. I think eventually we will get there. Um, Governor Inslee is, is being, um, guided by medical health experts that, but you know, understand this lagging number, but for me to say that, to say when he needs to do it, um, I, I think we'll eventually get there. Um, I just don't see the point of sending a letter. Uh, my other questions that, that came to mind again were who, who is going to write it? Um, are we going to have a say on, on what is in this letter? How, how is that going to work?
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Duval. Commissioner, your hand is raised.
Sorry, I needed to unmute myself. There we go. Um, yeah, I would, uh, and I guess I, I am not sure, but I, I was not aware that Governor Inslee had actually said he was going to end it. Maybe I'm wrong. Uh, I know he said there was more information to come, but, uh, I'm willing to stand corrected. I just wasn't, I wasn't aware that he'd actually come out and do that. But I, uh, my feeling on it is that we, uh, actually, uh, to Dr. Clary's point, I mean, maybe we could add some, some specific direction in the letter about, uh, you know, how to approach it, but I, but I do think it's, uh, I think it's worthwhile to encourage it because I'm not sure that we, that we know that he's going to actually going to do it, other than we say there's more information to come. Um, I think it's, uh, you know, we can, we can debate the masks and of course, we, we know that some types of masks are maybe more beneficial than others that we've seen, but, uh, but I don't think we can ignore the fact that there have been some negative consequences to school kids, you know, for, for me, coming from my district in Sunnyside, one of the biggest concerns that I've seen uh, on, on the young grades is looking at, and it's not just, it's not just limited to the younger grades particularly, but especially in the younger grades, we have issues where we have kids that are learning the English language. And they try to go to school and how on earth do you learn how to speak a new language when you can't even see how other people are forming the sounds? Uh, that is, that is really a big concern to me. I think, uh, you know, I've talked to teachers in the area that, uh, I know that we're not talking about remote learning, but the fact that, uh, you know, the kids have been remote, you know, learning remotely for a, a year to eighteen months. Some of the kids have, not only have they not moved forward, they've actually moved backward in their academic progress. And, and I don't think we could ignore that. It's, it's something that our kids are going to pay a price for, for a time to come, I'm afraid. And so I, I think, um, we certainly don't want to be in a position, I would agree with the statement that we don't want people to feel like if it's their choice to have the kids wear the mask, you know, as a parents that they, they do that, we shouldn't, uh, I mean, one of the things that the, the mask has been, uh, has been effective at doing is, is dividing us, among other things, you know, as we, we pit ourselves against one another based on whether we wear a mask or not. And, uh, I don't think we want to go there, but, uh, but I, I, I think it's time to, uh, to make it optional and I'd encourage the governor to take that step.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'm going to share my views and then Commissioner McKinney, I'll bring it up to you again. Thank you for waiting. Um, I have, have listened to, uh, all of the statements so far, and I am in agreement with this motion. I think that, um, it is a, a matter of being responsive and sensitive to our constituency who, um, you know, are, you have thoughts across the board about this. And I am also encouraged that the superintendent of public schools for the state of Washington recognizes that this is in some ways been a, an unnecessary or failed policy, particularly as inconsistently as has been applied with various school districts and, uh, various classrooms even. So I think the two critical things for me are number one, it is a matter of personal choice. And thank you, Commissioner, for recognizing that. There is certainly no condemnation for those who wish to move forward, but it is a matter of personal choice for the parents and the families. And the second, the second thing that is important to me is it brings back into local jurisdiction, things that I think belong in the decision-making ability of local jurisdiction. So having said that, I will support the motion. Uh, Commissioner, can you go ahead, please?
Thank you. I, and I was simply going to say in response to Dr. Clary that because, uh, to his point, you know, there are so many things that we may not as a board agree on the process of recommendation and a timeline that I specifically left it to be very vague. Uh, and, and I think, um, Councilwoman, uh, Duval asked, and so the motion was very specific. Uh, the motion was simply, uh, that this board, which typically is a letter drafted by the chair, and I would imagine in this case, it would be our vice chair in the absence of our chair being present at this particular meeting, would draft a letter written on behalf of the health board of Yakima County. Uh, and I believe it was simply to state, uh, that the Yakima Health Board, uh, implores, uh, you, Governor Inslee to end the statewide mask mandate, period. That's it.
Thank you.
And that was the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinney. Uh, Dr. Clary, your hand is raised again. Go ahead, please.
Well, you know, this is partly about local control and I, I would hate to, uh, be kind of speaking out of turn for those people who actually make the decisions, which are the local school to superintendents. And again, I, I think that, uh, uh, the teachers' union and, and groups of teachers may have, uh, opinions that maybe we should be considering because they are the local constituents that we're representing. And the only letter, um, that we got on this subject that came in a little late to be included for this agenda was from a teacher who was imploring that we continue with the masks and, uh, her opinion was that they are not harming the, the students. So I, I, I think the board has some strong personal opinions, but I'm not sure we're really representing, um, the people who are going to be making these decisions, which is the local school superintendents. I actually don't have a problem with writing a letter, but I guess I, I, I would just be supportive. Um, I think letters from Yakima Board of Health or Yakima in general, uh, have been somewhat inflammatory, uh, very negative proclamations. Um, if a decision's already made, been made to do this and it's just a matter of timeline, uh, it wouldn't hurt to, um, be a, be more supportive in the letter than uh, imploring or demanding or, uh, you know, being confrontational. But again, I would really, you know, we always talk about having the data to make decisions. I don't feel like we have a, a clear input from the most important members in this decision, which is our local school superintendents. And it would not be a huge issue, uh, to potentially have Andre or Ryan contact them, get some feedback, uh, and maybe not step out of turn and, uh, do things that, that they don't agree with, or perhaps we would acquire some information from them that would be useful in a letter and make it, uh, uh, more worth reading by the governor's office than just, uh, one sentence, um, declaration.
Thank you, Dr. Clary. Uh, Councilwoman Duval, your hand is raised.
Um, my question again was, was about the, the letter that would be drafted. Would it be a drop that would then come back to the board to, to be approved? Um, uh, and I, and I also do want to, want to point out that we also can hear from, um, teacher unions like WA and, uh, PSC, um, they are the people that, that work in the buildings. We can hear from, from teachers because I do, um, know that everyone has been impacted by the schools shutting down because there has, there have not been enough teachers um, or subs or cooks. And, and it's been very difficult and I think maybe removing the masks too soon could, could be potentially harmful. So it'd be very wise of us to, to hear from not only the, the leaders of the schools like superintendents, but, but, um, teachers and, um, support staff.
Thank you, Councilwoman Duval. Dr. Atterberry, your hand is raised?
I would just add that, uh, from a timing standpoint, I'd put the date is yesterday. And from the, uh, standpoint of who's the most important constituents, I would clearly say that is not the teachers' union, but instead the students. The students are the ones paying the price for this. The students are the ones that we should be listening to. And every school-aged child that I've spoken to in the last year has universally, universally year has universally, universally panned the masks. So I'm going to take my little straw poll as saying it's strongly in favor of mask removal, mask continuance. But that's just a little, a little humor at the same time as a serious note. I do think that most important constituent is the people being affected. That's the students.
Thank you, Dr. Atterbury. Does anyone else on the board wish to make a statement? Commissioner Lindy, your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you. I just want to let you know, I actually did go back and look at the governor's press conference. He actually did say Omicron clearly has characteristics that will allow us to lift mitigation measures with the weeks to come rather than months. It seems he didn't specify what that would be, but it does sound like he's thinking about doing something in the near future. And so with that, you know, I've got to think that with Chris Reickdahl, the OSPI director or superintendent, if he had that, he didn't, he didn't come to that conclusion without input from the school superintendents that he represents. So, you know, it may not necessarily be a bad idea to reach out to our local superintendents for a little bit of information on how to write the letter. And I do think there is something to be said about, now there's a right way and a wrong way to write a letter. You know, we usually do a little bit better with honey than with vinegar. But I still, I still think, since he's moving in the right direction, I certainly think we want to encourage that movement.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindy. Commissioner McKinney?
I would just say that all of those organizations have the ability to write their own letter. And we are here to write a letter on behalf of the health board who's representing, to Dr. Atterbury's points, the students. They will all have their own perspective and they will all carry their own weight. And the governor will listen to all of those various voices, as has the superintendent of public instruction, Mr. Reickdahl. So I do think that it is, it is good to separate the fact that we are here to act as a health board and that those other organizations will be able to and probably already are, especially, I think, unions are in close contact with the governor's office and probably are advocating for some sort of a timeline and instructions and guidance that they're advocating for, which is their right to do, which is also our right and responsibility to do as a health board. My motion, I believe, still stands to be very brief. I think it's one sentence. And I think in that, I don't really have anything else to say.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinney. Any other comments from the, my health board members?
Just one other. I never heard the teachers' union come to the health board and say, hey, what would you like us to say?
Thank you. You know, I am going to say that, you know, it was a one-sentence motion in terms of a letter, but I also agree that the approach may be a little maybe a little better received if we said that we appreciate his willingness to consider where we're at in this process and we implore him to lift that mandate immediately. So I appreciate you may be helpful.
If you are offering a friendly amendment to add, we appreciate your efforts thus far. I will accept that friendly amendment.
I don't know that I would put it in quite those terms, but
Well, that's generous for me to say, so I, but I
Thank you. So as I understood the motion, it was for us to write a letter imploring that he take action on this. So I think, I don't think it requires a friendly amendment to, because the motion was not the exact wording of the letter.
I did, actually. My motion was specific. I said that the Yakima Health Board implores Governor Inslee to end the statewide school mask mandate.
All right. But then I would make a friendly amendment because I would like to add a sentence initially that tells him we we appreciate or encourage him to continue to move forward in this process and appreciate his, you know, listening to constituents, for crying out loud, and then implore him to change it immediately.
I like the crying out loud part, but I'm guessing you didn't mean it. Maybe you want to restate for Ryan so he can read it back.
Ryan, are you there? Can you read me what I have, please?
Yes, I'm here. What did you want?
Can you read back my initial sentence?
Could you restate your sentence?
Well, my sentence, my sentence basically would be to the governor that we are, we, okay, I'm going to rephrase this, that we are appreciative of his willingness to move forward and we encourage him then to act immediately.
I accept.
Okay. So are we taking roll call for the amendment or?
We can, if there's no other comments.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment, please, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Fusco, please.
Thank you. Not on the issue of writing it, but Superintendent Reickdahl said moving from pandemic to endemic, or it has moved from pandemic to endemic, if I believe Commissioner McKinney, that's what she said. And
That's what he said.
Yes. I would disagree with that. I want to be very clear. Omicron is a textbook example of what a pandemic is, something that happens in one country and spreads dramatically very quickly to another country. So that's something I just want to distinguish, that people's excitement or hope that we move quickly on certain things cannot be misconstrued with the conclusions of why we're taking this seriously. We are still in a very dangerous situation and we could very well have more spread that continues to be something that's not contained in our country or contained by other countries. The more travel we have, the more commerce we have, the more international relations we have, the more we have susceptibility. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Any more comments by either members of the board? Because we are in the process of debating a motion and it's been made. Any further comments? If not, we have the roll call vote, please.
Okay, just for clarification, we're voting on the amendment to the original motion. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that amendment was to add in the letter that we are appreciative of his willingness to move forward quickly. If you are in favor, say yes. If not, say no. Dr. Clary?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember DeValle?
Yes.
Dr. Atterbury?
Yes.
And councilmember Byers?
Yes, so motion to amend passes six zero. And now we come back to the original motion. So would you read the entirety of the letter then? Ryan, from what you have.
Okay, so now the motion reads as the board sent a letter to Governor Inslee to end the statewide school mask mandate and we are appreciative of your willingness to move forward quickly. You are in favor of the motion? Please state yes. If not, please state no. Dr. Clary?
Yes, it's harmless.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember DeValle?
Yes.
Dr. Atterbury?
Yes.
Councilmember Byers?
Yes. All right, motion passes as it's amended, six zero. So thank you, Board of Health, for your good work in this process tonight. Appreciate that. And at this point, we are again at the place of adjournment.
I motioned to adjourn.
To?
A second there.
We have a motion by Commissioner McKinney and a second by, I'm sorry, that was Commissioner Lindy to adjourn to our next regular scheduled session. Do we have any objections to the motion? Hearing none, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.